McCray.
Here.
Okay, we are all here. Move on and ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest under the municipal conflict of interest act. Okay, seeing none. We did have a closed meeting and I have nothing to report out of that closed session. We have no presentations announcements and I have. Just let's pause for a second. I have the old agenda up here. Sorry, apologize for that. I opened up the wrong window here. So I have a recommendation regarding the agenda that the Council of the Township of Centre Wellington confirmed the agenda for its meeting held May, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one as amended to add, one, a report from Mayor Linton regarding the position of deputy mayor and two, Matt Woods as a delegation regarding the submission of a petition and that the addendum be considered as, as the next item on the agenda. And I have a mover for that recommendation, please. Counselor Dunsmore, second by. Counselor McCray, all in favor? And that is carried. So the first item that we have on the agenda is regarding the position of deputy mayor. And at this point, I would like to call on the delegation. First, Matt Woods to come and speak. I'll just make sure he's let out of our waiting room. Okay, so a delegation isn't in the waiting room right now, so our clerk will watch for, for Matt and if he comes in the middle of my, my report, then we'll make sure that he has a chance to speak to his petition. And I think everybody on council received that petition. Just can everybody confirm with a show of hands that you did receive that submission? That? Okay, good. Okay, so I'm going to, I have a few notes here that I'm gonna go through prior to putting this on the table. And you see the recommendation before you and I'm gonna split the recommendation into two motions and we'll deal with them separately. And I am disappointed and unhappy that I feel the need to bring this motion to council this afternoon. I don't question that it's necessary, but that doesn't make it any easier for me. I will give all members of council the opportunity to speak to this motion and I'll allow Counselor Van Lewen to go last. I want to speak first to provide my rationale for bringing this to council today. We're approaching the tail end of a year-long fight against a very serious global pandemic. As of this morning, COVID has killed two million four hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and sixteen people worldwide, twenty-one thousand three hundred and eleven in Canada, six thousand six hundred and ninety-three in Ontario, ninety-one in our public health region, twenty-seven in Wellington County. And the only reason that these fatalities are not much, much higher is widespread government intervention. Over the past year, government leaders across all political parties have put aside their differences to work together to fight this enemy. They've taken strong action to figure out how to best save our hospitals from being completely overwhelmed, protect their most vulnerable people, and ultimately save as many lives as possible. Of course, mistakes have been made along the way. How could mistakes not be made when our leaders have had to make lightning-fast decisions in the face of a highly contagious illness of which the world has never seen and a population with no immunity to it? Our leaders have been forced to make decisions and take actions on the fly while learning every day more about how this illness works. It's been like building a plane while you're flying it. And not only has unprecedented action been taken to save lives, but these same leaders have also had to take simultaneous action to save our economy from collapsing. And both Wellington County and the Township of Centre Wellington have done their part. I am proud of what we have accomplished together, both to save lives and support local jobs and businesses. And we have always put the health and safety of our people first, both our county and township staff and our residents. I know people are hurting. I know families are struggling. Many businesses are hanging on by a thread. And I know people are frustrated and they want to blame someone. And thanks to group like End Your End of Lockdown Caucus, they now can blame their leaders at all government levels. Seriously, do you think that any of us wanted a lockdown? Prior to the recent lockdown, Dr. Mercer had a meeting with all seven mayors in, in the county, and she told us that a lockdown may be coming and, and asked for our feedback. All seven of us said that we are not in favor of a lockdown and that we thought the Ontario government should stick to their color-coded model and keep things open. She then explained to us that the health professionals across Ontario were saying something different about the situation. She told us that hospitals were at the verge of collapse, available ICU beds were gone, doctors and nurses and other healthcare professionals were almost at a breaking point. She said that unless we took drastic effort and lock things down across the province, numbers of cases would skyrocket, the healthcare system would collapse and it would be, and the result would be significant loss of life. So after this discussion with Dr. Mercer, it became obvious to all of us that saving lives trumped our very real economic concerns. We needed to have a lockdown. For me as a leader, the end of the lockdown caucus is a slap in the face. It turns our leaders and our public health officials into villains. It is politicizing a public health pandemic. And the whole timing of this movement is terrible. We are now at the tail end of a pandemic. Every level of government is heads down, focusing its efforts on rolling out a massive and complex vaccination program like we've never seen before. We should be united as leaders, focusing our attention on ending this thing once and for all. Instead, we're wasting precious time and resources, confusing the public and defending ourselves against the fringe group that claims that COVID-19 pandemic restrictions violate our Charter of Rights and Freedoms. It is extremely unfortunate and somewhat ironic that we are having to address the situation on the very day that the Ontario government has ended the lockdown after it has done what it needed to do. Hopefully, this is the last lockdown we need. More than ever, people need to have confidence in local government and our local healthcare professionals. This motion has absolutely nothing to do with penalizing someone for having a different opinion. It is, it has nothing to do with cancel, cancel culture. Wanting to this. The pros and cons of government lockdown is not. I've, I've known since the beginning of this pandemic that Counselor Van Lewen and I were on different pages. That was obvious to me when he lit into me, the, the, on the day that I issued an order for mandatory masks across Wellington County in support of Dr. Mercer's public order. He made his opinion very clear to all the council in his comments to Dr. Mercer when she came to speak us, to speak to us in the summer. Yet despite this very obvious difference in opinions, never once did I question him as deputy mayor. This motion has nothing to do with Counselor, Counselor Van Lewen disagreeing with me. The underlying issue is our community needs to hear a consistent message from our mayor and deputy mayor right now. This is not business as usual. It is not a disagreement on what road to pave or what bridge to build. We are in a declared state of emergency and we need to have a mayor and deputy mayor that are working together. We cannot afford to have a counselor using his title as deputy mayor to openly criticize federal, provincial, county, and township governments, including our approach to support the actions taken by our own Wellington, Duffering, Guelph Public Health. We cannot have a deputy mayor that posts and shares information with questionable accuracy, participate in public photo op that clearly defies lockdown rules, indoors, no masks, no physical distancing, and to promote a movement that encourages business, businesses to open up in defiance of a lockdown order. It's absolutely essential that the mayor and deputy mayor are unified and promoting a consistent message right now to encourage our community to continue to follow a few simple rules like physical distancing and wearing masks and to communicate these simple rules that they will help us slow the spread of COVID, reduce the strain in our healthcare system and save lives and avoid the need for another lockdown. The most, another important point that I want to make before turning the floor over to the rest of council is that the deputy mayor position in Centre Wellington is not an elected position. This is, this is different than many municipalities across Ontario. Not one person in Centre Wellington voted to make Counselor Van Lewen the deputy mayor. He serves that role because council put him there. This distinction is important. I'm sure that the majority of people who signed the change.org position had no idea that Counselor Van Lewen was not elected deputy mayor. I'm sure that Jennifer from Langley, B.C., or Whitley from Winnipeg, or Samuel from Australia have no idea of this. This is not a move that's anti-democratic. Council put, council, council put Counselor Van Lewen in this role and council can remove it. And unfortunately, this motion to remove Counselor Van Lewen as deputy mayor, I believe, is necessary at this time. With that, I will turn over, oh, with that, I know that Matt is now with us, so I will invite Matt Woods to come and speak to us as a delegation regarding a petition. Welcome, Matt.
Can I be heard?
Yeah, you're, you're heard now. Go ahead.
Okay, gotcha. Now I had the microphone turned off. How's everyone this afternoon?
Good.
Good. Sorry I was late in that, but lots of snow fell last night. So anyways, so basically I heard most of what you had to say there. Good points and all on that, but basically I'm not here to debate the lockdown or anything like that. What I saw last week and what I read in the paper and that, and the motion that was coming forward is removing someone from a position based on their opinion. And as I recall, we do live in Canada and everyone's entitled to their own opinion. So basically what I did was I decided, decided it was time to take action and I started a petition. Now, all these signatures, now anyone from other provinces or another country and that, they have a direct contact with someone from this community because they all came from my contact list and I focus extremely exclusively on the people in our community that I know that this affects. So just because they're another part of the world, they have an association with someone from this community. So I didn't like seeing that on there myself, but that's how it came, how it came from because it all started from my contact list with people that I know from our town. But I started this petition at eight o'clock on Friday night. I finally started sending it out. In just over three days or just under three days and that, we collected almost a thousand signatures with some pretty strong opinions and comments in that, basically questioning the actions of what are, of the motion being put forth today. Feeling it's a, it's basically not how our democratic system should work. And that Counselor Van Lewen should remain deputy mayor in that despite what his opinions are. Whether we agree with them or not.
Okay, is, is that, is that the conclusion of your delegation, Matt?
That's, that's pretty much the long and the short of it and that it's, it's, he has, he has a right to his opinion. He shouldn't be punished for it or removed from his position. And I have almost a thousand people that feel the same.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for coming to council. I know with short notice and appreciate you delegating to council today. Okay, so I'd like to have councillors have a chance to speak about this motion and I'll start with.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Matt Wood, for appearing today as a delegation. Mayor, we all know that Canada is a democracy and that democracy is based on the rule of law. And I want to speak to the Dutch community in Fergus first. Mayor, my dad put his life on the line to defend freedom of speech and defend the rule of law and the Second World War and the liberation of Holland. So this is a very important issue to me personally, free speech and the rule of law. My dad put his life on the line to defend it. So here we have, Matt, you're, you presented an excellent petition and I want to, for starting it and speaking about free speech, but at the end of the day, free speech is one thing, but what's, what we have here is the rule of law and one of those principles is that we're innocent until we're proven guilty. And Mayor, you've just described in your report a textbook perfect case where, of a matter that needs to be investigated by the integrity commissioner. As we all know, we've engaged an integrity commissioner to look at matters like this, to look at these kinds of situations. And Deputy Mayor Steve, you chaired the meeting when the, the integrity commissioner spoke to us and at that meeting we passed a code of conduct. It's a very important thing, a code of conduct, and it's also important that Steve get a hearing. And the only way to do that is with the integrity commissioner. And if the deputy mayor has done nothing wrong, then he'll be vindicated. And therefore, Mayor, I, I want to make a motion to amend your recommendation that the Township of Centre Wellington engage the integrity commissioner to commence a full investigation and that we defer the decision to remove Counselor Van Lewen until we have a full report from the integrity commissioner. So I made a motion to amend your recommendation. I think it's important. We defend free speech and we defend the rule of law in our township.
Yeah, there's no motion on the floor to amend, so we're gonna go through all of council first and then we'll come back to your proposed motion, Counselor Foster. Counselor McLean?
Okay, sorry, my, my computer died, so I just had to switch to my tablet and it doesn't work quite the same. Sorry about that. Um. I'd somewhat echo what Bob just said. I was very disappointed, I guess, when the news came out, only because I just didn't really agree with the group that, that Steve signed or joined with. But there's no rule against that. There's a lot of people I don't agree with. I was, I was angry about the fact that that group blatantly disregarded the law of the lockdown and, and traveled without requirement for a photo op, without face masks and without social distancing. But once again, that's a matter of law. It's not a matter of council, I don't think. So I tend to echo what Counselor Foster just said, which is, based upon comments made by you, Mary Linton, the integrity commissioner didn't find that Counselor Van Lewen did anything incorrectly. I think we should get a report from the integrity commissioner to tell us one way or the other, because I, I can't make that judgment based upon the information we have.
Counselor Ketchus?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Matt, for making your presentation. I since this is about removing Counselor Van Lewen from the deputy mayor, I'm going to just say that I need to have reasons that I think are substantial, not just that if he has a different opinion than the mayor as he stated in the newspaper, then he can't be deputy mayor. And I would, I have, I would, I have a, an amendment to the motion that I sent to the clerk. And I would like the opportunity to present that. And basically, it says, it's right after what the mayor has put in the recommendation and it says, "The decision to execute the above motion will be pending an integrity commissioner investigation and report to determine if Counselor Van Lewen broke any law and any deputy mayor is required to have the same views as the mayor for Centre Wellington regarding the pandemic to fulfill his or her duties." I'd just like to know whether that's, that'll help me make my decision if, if we have that investigation. And I think it's only fair. I'm not a lawyer. And my experience, which I have experience with the integrity, is I think he's very just and, and he takes all the things and, and he knows the law constitutional, our new code of conduct, he actually created it. So he knows all these facets that, and the application of them. And so I, I feel very strongly that I need to know that where the law is broken. Where, like, does he have to agree with the mayor? It seems unusual that you have to have people to have the same views. And I think that that allows also when we're deciding who can be maybe the deputy mayor in the future, that it's not just in this divided council that it has to be from one particular group of people. I think that, that we should know this and it's mainly, I'm just concerned about this rushing. It's, it's, this is too rushed for me. I need to know more information. And I think this motion, this amendment that I'm proposing would allow for that so we can determine.
Counselor Dunsmore?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Stephen, you and I have talked privately. I haven't made any public comments, but I have told you that I wholeheartedly support your right to have your beliefs and to have your opinion. And I've also told you that I can't disagree more with the opinions that you, that you've stated and that you've backed, but I accept your right to have those opinions. When Dr. Mercer came to council, there were two of us that weren't given an opportunity to question her or to state any of our opinions around her. So I want to make sure that I'm on the record here is saying that Dr. Mercer, I support your, your mask bylaw. I support your medical order. I support your actions. This is a pandemic and I support the medical community in this pandemic. And I think it's imperative that we don't politicize a pandemic. Dr. Fishburne and the Mental Health Association of Wellington, Waterloo are doing a fabulous job running webinars and trying to help people through the mental health aspects of this pandemic. And I would encourage anybody to reach out and, and seek their advice during this because being in lockdown is not a great thing. I've read some of the literature, Steve, that your new group that you've come in contact with and are supporting. And honestly, some of it scares me. We should be held in the Township of Centre Wellington as an example of what can happen when you do it right and you take action. The numbers here are relatively low. Our local economy was allowed to stay open with a mask bylaw and running at reduced levels. The province then went into a province-wide lockdown and shut everything down. Do I agree with what the province is doing? Absolutely not. I do not believe that we should have big box stores open and our local economy shut down. We were doing it right and we need to continue that and find ways. However, coming out with some of the statements that this group makes, it does cause me concern. And to Mayor Linton's point, he assigned all of us to committees. At the same time, he assigned Stephen Van Lewen to the job of deputy mayor. It's an assigned position. It's not an elected position. It's at the, at the, the request of the mayor. And so he can remove him at his request. This is not something for the integrity commissioner to rule on because I honestly believe that Stephen Van Lewen hasn't breached the municipal act. He hasn't done anything wrong other than state his opinion. I think it's risky for us as a council to have a mayor and a deputy mayor who are just opposed to each other in a state of an emergency. And for that reason, I support the mayor on this.
Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Stephen, I mean, you and I both had a bit of a chat after or before this meeting and then we had some email correspondence back and forth. And frankly, I have to say that, you know, I support your right in terms of freedom of conscience, freedom of expression, the right to represent your constituents' views and your church. And I also recognize that you and I share a common bond in wanting to help our community and I respect you for that. But we differ in our approach. Your approach that I take issue with is when I consider the additional authority a mayor or acting mayor has over that of a counselor and information that you may rely on to form your decision. You're joining the End the Lockdown Caucus, which is part of Liberty Coalition Canada, is concerning given what the coalition stands for. It promotes individuals who defy emergency measures to protect residents. On the surface, the website appears innocuous, but dive deeper into the promoted links and you will find a more disturbing point of view. Its disinformation advancement erodes social cohesion, trust in each other, our communities and even our public health institutions. One questionable source of data is its link to the World Doctors Alliance. Fact-checking some of the data posted on the site revealed inconsistencies and mistruths. Look what this situation is doing to our community. It divides. Our provincial leader, cabinet and Ministry of Health officials are doing what they feel is best, trying to strike the right balance, ensuring protecting lives and livelihoods. Their approach may not be perfect. I mean, frankly, I don't understand why small stores have to be shut and the big box stores can stay open. I think that's wrong. But it is better to do what, it's better what we're doing here than what has taken place south of the border. Liberty Coalition Canada offers no alternatives apart from open up and let's make money. What safety precautions are they proposing to put in place to protect the general public? Given what I read on Liberty Coalition Canada website, I can't continue to support you in your role as acting mayor, given the extra responsibilities of a mayor and your approach to resolving the COVID challenge.
Thanks, councillors. Counselor Van Lewen?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks councillors for your, your input. I definitely appreciate the comments and the discussion that is taking place here. And even just the discussions we have in person, they're very important. And this is what, what really truly is what I was looking for in all of this is to begin a dialogue and a discussion. And it's unfortunate that it has to come into this way. I want to also say thanks to, to all the public and the phone calls and the emails. I really have to admit that I truly thought that there was a concern and a, a real effect on the community prior to joining this caucus. And after this, with, with the phone calls and the emails and the stories and I can't tell you enough to the council and the public, this is, this is, the lockdowns are, are where we need to go. And, and I really, it saddens me because the support has been unbelievable and the stories have been unbelievable. So, so the direction, we have to open discussion and, and dialogue. That being said, and especially I would, I would thank Matt Woods as well for his, his petition. It's, it's more of an understanding that there is that support. That being said, also even the staffing, the, it's opened a lot of dialogue to how the public view the staffing and how appreciative they are of the work that they've been doing because this is a direct Because this is a direction they've been given, ice rinks being open, trying to get community out and have mental health and strong strong mental health, the ability to worship, different things. But they're running and working under a leadership that says that lockdowns is the best way and the only way. And that's where I struggled. And this is why I had to uh, I couldn't remain quiet anymore after hearing all these stories. It's, we have a hurting community and we have a, and this hurt and this pain is bigger than just using the term of a lockdown in this way. And this is what leadership is. This is about the discussion here and the discussion at the, at the end of the lockdowns caucus is about having an open discussion, asking to open up the discussion without being fired, without having um being kicked out of of uh discussion platforms. Uh, and that's, that is what has been happening. And I think that if you, if you realize that we're looking for a platform to have a discussion and to say there is pain and there is harm and there is effects from the route we have taken that far outreach what's what we're trying to protect. That doesn't mean that we don't listen to and bring to the table public health. It doesn't mean that we don't have a discussion with the hospital boards and and other areas. That's wise governance. But it's not the only place that we go. And there's where I'm, where I'm looking at and what I'm trying to, to get to the table is we need to listen also to other areas of the effects. And that's what leadership is. It's listening to the voices and um, this is why I'm so very disappointed in, in just this action. It's, it's not that I need to remain as a deputy mayor for my voice to be heard because I can be the counselor. Um, but I think what it speaks to uh is that the voices of the people and of the people that have been harmed and the people who are suffering, that those voices don't count at the table, that they're minimized and that the only voice at the table is a individual and in a single voice, which could be the, the healthcare system, as in public health. But we need to listen to the healthcare in other areas as well. And that's where, that is where I am, believe we need to open the dialogue. And that's what the End the Lockdown Caucus actually states. If you read, if you read its statement, that is the only statement the End the Lockdown Caucus has put out right now. And and we have uh work to do in regards to information to place, but it was the very first steps. And the first thing that happens is an immediate reaction, not asking why, where are these voices? Who are these people? But we begin with removal of, of uh the deputy mayor. That is what disappoints me the most is this is a, this is a symbolism towards saying that your voices of the people are not as important as, for example, public health. And so I look at it, um, I, I did ask the mayor and I said, are you sure you want me to engage in this uh, this vote? Uh, because I do think that it's something that um possibly isn't the best for me to vote on. So I, and and the mayor did express that he wanted me to be part of the vote. But I would actually like to abstain from this vote. So the council, as I said, council um also voted to place me in there. I will abstain from the vote in the direction. But I will say that I believe that the voices of those suffering and the people need to be heard. And I'm just very disappointed in this action that that's come forward because that is really it, it, it just sends in that same signal over again. So thanks, thanks for allowing me to hear that, to speak and I'm didn't want to get into too much detail, but I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, counselors. And I know we have a couple of modifications on the table that we uh have to go to, that we want to go through. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Um, the first one is that uh this is a difficult decision and that's why it took me four days to um to make, go, go through this process. I wanted to make sure I talked to Counselor Van Lewin first. I wanted to make sure I touched base with the integrity commissioner. And then I wanted to make sure that I touched base with all of council before anything went out into the media and anything was talked about and um, but I think that was important. So this is not a decision I ta- I took um hastily. At the end of the day, it is a council decision. It's not my decision. But um, you know, right now in the middle of an emergency situation, we have to have some unity and leadership. Um, I hear, I hear what members of council are saying about going and going back to integrity commissioner. Um, I, I guess there's not a, a belief in, in what I heard from the integrity commissioner. He made it really clear that no laws were broken here. Um, he, he made it really clear that this is a political decision. He said there was no contravention of the municipal act by Counselor Van Lewin. And he said that if any members of council want to uh question any of the actions of of Counselor Van Lewin, they can go to him directly. Um, and so, but if council wants to go back there, um, it's, I think there's probably about a a, a lot of, a lot of time, I think it's over a hundred days uh for them to be able to get their ruling back to us. Um, and as far as the motion that Counselor Kittriss has, there's no question that he's going to say, obviously, the deputy mayor and the mayor should be able to disagree. I mean, nobody's ever said that. Um, so that would be insulting his intelligence to put that in there. But uh, as far as the rest, I know what he's going to say because he already sent us a report and I want to just pull out a couple, a couple of paragraphs in case we forgot what his report said. So on, on the report that uh he sent to us with regards to our first uh integrity commissioner situation eighty-seven, he says, in my view, utilizing the tools of political debate to respond to unfairness and inaccuracy in political debate is far more appropriate than having integrity commissioner police the truth and fairness out of political speech. And then he, any event, I do not believe it is a place to the integrity commissioner to interfere fear of debate of this nature. So he, well, the integrity commissioner route, it will come back to us in the exactly same format as it, as it is right now. Um, but if you want to go that path and you, and you want to see something in writing from the integrity commissioner, then that's um, then that is council's program. I just wanted to remind Counselor Van Lewin that abstinence is a no. So just to be sure that there, based on the municipal act, there is no abstaining from vote. That would be a no, okay? Uh, and now we'll go back to Counselor Foster because he was going through and potentially putting a motion forward. Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And I, I do appreciate you mentioning the, the comments of the integrity commissioner. I believe you're referring to comments made way back in January twenty twenty and, and you've, you've mentioned whether we should take the time to go back there. But Mayor, it's, it's important to point out that your, your correspondence with the integrity commissioner on this matter was verbal. And it needs to be in writing to be uh advice that can be relied upon. And we have nothing in writing. We don't know what facts you presented to him. We don't know what advice he gave you because it wasn't in writing. And that's all the more reason um to refer this matter today to the integrity commissioner so we can get a written report on this matter. Mayor, we should not remove Counselor Van Lewin from being deputy mayor because he disagrees with you. We should only remove him if we can be clearly uh shown that he has breached our code of conduct. That is the only good reason to remove him. And, and in order to do that, we have to have a fulsome report in writing from the integrity commissioner. So my motion stands to amend your recommendation that we engage the integrity commissioner to commence a full investigation into this matter and that we defer the decision to remove Counselor Van Lewin as deputy mayor pending such a fulsome report. I see no other good way forward. So I've made the motion, uh, Mayor, and it needs to be dealt with.
Okay, so um, I've just been conferring to our, with our clerk. That's not a, that's not an amendment. That's a brand new motion because it is taking us in a different direction. Um, and not saying that we won't.
No, it's not. It's not, Mayor. It's.
Point of order. Please don't interrupt me again, Counselor Foster.
You need to speak the truth, sir. That's a.
Please don't interrupt me again. If you, you do it again. Believe. Get to that if, um, if we need to get to that. Um, but I wanted to go to Counselor Kittriss because if he has a, a real amendment, then we can deal with that. Otherwise, we're going to go to the motion on the table. And then if that, if we have to go past that, we go to another motion. Should we get one? Yeah, so just, just a second. I will, I'm gonna, I'm just.
Right of order, Mayor. Point of order, please.
What's your point of order, Counselor Foster?
You made a recommendation in your, you made the recommendation. I made an motion to amend it in my initial remarks. There is a motion on the floor to amend.
No.
It is a motion to amend.
Counselor Foster? A motion on the floor means you get a mover and a seconder. We did not get a mover and a seconder. We don't have a motion on the floor. So therefore, you can't amend something that isn't on the floor.
I made a motion and you didn't call for discuss. Mayor, you're out of order. It's a point of order. I made a mo-
Okay. Okay, Counselor Foster, that's the last warning. If you interrupt the proceedings again, um, I'm going to have the clerk uh ask you to be removed. I'm going to take a fi- a five-minute breaks and uh discuss this matter with our clerk and our CEO to make sure that we're doing things in a procedurally right way.
Testing, testing. Can anyone hear me? Testing.
I wonder if this vote wasn't supposed to happen or something, eh?
Yeah. Can you hear me, Steve? No, Steve, can he?
Yes, Matt, we can hear you.
Oh, he can?
You're on mute.
It's delayed then, so. Well, fate works in mysterious ways.
We're just working on some of the technical piece with the mayor's computer and we'll be right back with you in a few minutes.
Okay, sorry about that, folks. Can everybody hear me? For a joke, you should have all put your thumbs down. I would have thrown something. I have three computers here. And I think where we're at, did we get a mover and a second there for that motion? It's so long ago, let's just do it again.
Mayor, could you just reread what you had said, please?
Yeah.
Printed out?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna screen. I'll read it again. It's pretty short. That the Council of Township of Center Wellington defer a decision to, on the position of the deputy mayor, pending an investigation by the Integrity Commissioner into whether councillor Van Lewen violated the council code of conduct or any other legislation. Councillor Kittriss is shaking her head. What does that mean?
Means I didn't hear what you said. It's not stable. I would like to have it written on the screen and then I know what you said and agree with it. I just, I can't, my, I don't know whether it's your connection or it's my connection, but somehow connections are not working here.
Okay, so let's just make sure that, did anybody else have a problem? First of all, let's deal with the tactical issue. Does anybody else have an issue with hearing me?
Not now.
So, okay, but did you, when councillor Kittriss did have a problem? Okay, so Carrie is gonna put something on the screen. I can't share my screen now. I didn't get, I'd sell my other, one of my three computers here, so I can't flip it over. So Carrie's gonna put something on a shared screen. Let's probably take a bet. We weren't ready for this. Councillor Foster, what?
Mayor, I'd like to suggest that the motion needs to say a full written report from the, pending a full written report from the Integrity Commissioner. I want to see a full written report. That's what I proposed initially as an amendment.
Yeah, I think the Integrity Commissioner will only provide a report in writing, so I think that's pretty redundant. Put that down there. That's what an investigation is. So I think this would cover it off. Any concerns with the way this is written? Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Everybody's okay? Okay. All right, so can we get a mover and a second there? Then I want this off so I can see everybody. So councillor Kittriss and councillor Foster moved and seconded this. Okay, and now let's remove this and we'll get back to the view. Okay, perfect, I can see. But now we'll just go around and ask for comments from council. Oh, oh, sorry, yeah, I forgot about that. Motion to defer, it isn't council commitment, it goes without any discussion, so let's go to vote on a motion to defer. All in favor of deferring this as written? That's just councillor McCray, councillor McQuain, councillor Kittriss and councillor Foster in opposition to defer. Councillor Dunsmore and Mary Linton, that passes. So that will be off and we'll do this all over again, okay? All right, now I just have to find my agenda. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda of confirmation of minutes. We have minutes from several meetings there. I have a recommendation that the minutes of the ad hoc committee procedures bylaw meeting held November 16th, 2020, and they say the whole meetings held November 23rd, November 25th, November 30th to 2020, and January 5th, 2021, be adopted as circulated. Have a mover for that recommendation, please. Councillor McCray, second by councillor Dunsmore, all in favor? And that's Carrie. Moving on to no delegation, so moving on to 11 consideration of reports. We have water, wastewater and source protection annual reports, and we have a report from Dino, our manager of environmental services. So I will pass it over to Dino. Welcome, Dino. Dino, you're on mute.
Thank you. Challenges all around today. Thank you, Mary Linton, and through you presented to council today, this afternoon, through the committee of the whole report, our annual reports as required through various legislation. Our annual reports are water, wastewater and source protection. And they include our drinking water system annual report, our drinking water system summary report, our Alora and Fergus wastewater treatment plant annual performance reports, and of course, the Township of Centre Wellington Risk Management Official and Municipal Annual Report. I'd like to open the floor up to any questions that you may have for these reports.
Thanks very much, Dino. Questions from council? Councillor McCray?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Yeah, I have, I guess, a couple of questions. Page 61, table eight, well E1 summary. I just noticed the flow rate liters per second on October 2020. It was 20.17 liters per second and our approved maximum flow rate is 20.1. What was happening back then? Just some of our other wells weren't running at full operation that we needed to get more out of V1?
Yeah, go ahead, Dino.
Am I on mute?
No, not now, you're good.
Perfect, thank you. All right, through you, Mary Linton, thank you for the question. Those values tend to be elevated at pump startup and during maintenance, post-maintenance. They are fairly common in terms of startup procedure where the pump will ramp up and then level off to the approved flow rate. So it's very minor instantaneous flow exceeds.
Great, does that answer your question, councillor McCray?
Yes, thank you, it does. The other question I have is related, oh, okay, sorry, we're gonna talk about the sewer one later, so I'll wait, hold off on that.
Okay, councillor Dunsmore?
I have no questions, Dino. Thank you for the reports and thanks for the effort that went into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on page 20, page 75. Operational summary. Number eight says filamentous outbreaks at plant occurred several times. Can you actually explain to me what that is? And why there was several? I mean, I'm just, it was mentioned before in the water section, but I just wanted, this is the sewage section? So maybe you could explain that to me?
Dino?
Right, again, thank you, through you, Mary Linton. The filamentous outbreaks have occurred primarily as a result of incoming biological oxygen demand and grease. Both of our primary treatment systems were out of service for chain and flight replacement, which essentially allowed for a lot of grease and solids to be carried forward through into the process. That allowed for a lot of algae to have a greater food source. And filamentous outbreak, we believe is attributed to that. Now that we've gotten the chain and flight system back in operation, we haven't seen it reoccur. We did, it has been known to be experienced in the past. It's not an unusual event. It happens in many wastewater treatment plants.
Thanks, Dino. Councillor McQuain?
Thank you. I don't have anything further, actually. Stephen asked the same question I had about the filamentous, so, thank you.
Councillor Van Lewen?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Dino, for this huge report to read. One of the things I'm trying to remember, it's amazing how much information's in there, and I don't have the exact spot, but it did speak about our wastewater and some of the waste that we produce in the Alora plant. Do we sell that fertilizer? Waste, because the discussion earlier on when we built the plant was that we were gonna be able to sell it instead of just spreading it. So is that, has that come into fruition?
Dino?
Yes, and thanks again through you, Mary Linton. Thank you, Stephen, great question. Yes, we do. It, we have a process called the Listec process. It results in a certified fertilizer by the Canadian government. And it is sold as a fertilizer as opposed to a bio solid. We're in a cost-sharing agreement with the company, Listec. And we did do, it was land application through fertilization this year with that product.
Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Dino, very good report. Thank you very much for it. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, councillors. I'll read the recommendation. That the Council of Township of Centre Wellington receives as information the following 2020 water and wastewater annual reports, the Township of Centre Wellington Drinking Water System Annual Report, the Township of Centre Wellington Drinking Water System Summary Report, Elora Wastewater Treatment Plant Annual Performance Report, the Fergus Wastewater Treatment Plant Annual Performance Report, and the Township of Centre Wellington Risk Management Official and Municipal Annual Report. Mover for that, please. Councillor McQuain, second by councillor McCray, all in favor? And that is carried on to 11.2 sewer use bylaw update. Over, back to you, Dino. Dino, you're muted.
My apologies again. Thank you, and through you, Mary Linton. Through this report to committee of the whole, staff is proposing an update to replace existing sewer use bylaws. The disposal of wastewater to both sanitary and storm has been regulated through two sewer use bylaws, namely bylaw 2849 in Fergus and bylaw 3000-90 in Alora. These existing bylaws are outdated and do not provide for consistent requirements throughout the towns and village. An update is necessary to fill regulatory gaps, meet new standards, and help promote clarity and administration and compliance by providing consistency as a single bylaw. The objective of the new sewer use bylaws to provide a strategy to reduce or eliminate contaminants discharged to the township's sewer systems through elimination at the source of discharge. The emphasis will always be to protect people, property and the environment through cooperative efforts. By working through voluntary and negotiated means, the township will aim to reduce pollutant loadings from the industrial, commercial and institutional sectors, or ICI sectors. The implementation of the new bylaw will be primarily through education, communication and targeted outreach. Immediate and identified concerns will be addressed as a priority through risk-based analysis. Mike Mullin, our supervisor of special projects and customer service, has completed a presentation for council, which is provided in attachment three. The presentation provides additional information regarding the bylaw, and I will turn the presentation over to Mike at this point. Over to you, Mike.
Welcome, Mike.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, you're all good.
All right, I'm just prepared a little presentation regarding the sewer use bylaw date that's about 19 slides long. I'll, I'll share my, my screen here. All right, so everyone should be able to see that, so I'll just start up. Sorry, start up the slideshow in one second here. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yeah, you're all good, you're all good.
Okay, thank you. So, good afternoon, members of council, and through you, Mary Linton. It is my privilege today to present to you the updated sewer use bylaw. This presentation format will include the following: the purpose, objectives and rationale of the new bylaw, the existing bylaws and the approach taken by staff to update these to the new bylaw, features of the updated bylaw, and finally, the anticipated impact over time. Purpose of the bylaw. Very simple, to regulate and control the discharge of water and wastewater in municipal and storm sewers. These measures are intended to protect the environment and ensure we have continued capacity to treat our waste efficiently. The objectives of this bylaw. The regulatory framework aims to achieve the following: to protect the public, municipal staff and property from hazardous conditions. That hazard, greatest concern being sewer gases, as they can displace oxygen incapacitate workers and residents alike, as well as create conditions for an explosion. Another is privated waste like lead and mercury because they are known to have environmental and health impacts. As well, sewer backups. I don't know if anyone's experienced those, but they can result in sewage flowing in basements devastating personal and property impacts. And are a source of insurance claims and litigation. These backups are made worse by creating a biohazard to staff and property owners and result in extra work and risk to staff while clearing the blockage and cleaning up all spilled sewage in the environment. In addition to protecting the public, staff and property, primary objective is, of course, to protect our environment. Many, many of us will remember the threat that PCBs posed, mainly in the past. They still do, but to not as great an extent. Well, there are more threats that have come to light since then that I've found in solvents and pharmaceuticals, just to name a few. These are mainly organic compounds that form toxic chemicals that are known to cause impact to the environment and are not removed through our conventional treatment process. They are either discharged into the wastewater fluid or remain in the bio cells. With their land applied. Moving on. More objectives to protect the wastewater treatment process from set. We've mentioned filamentous outbreaks already. These filamentous algae is one of the primary examples of a process upset. It's experienced at the plant from time to time. Protecting the wastewater treatment plant from upsets. If you're not involved in the wastewater treatment community, you might not appreciate the balance that is required to keep these plants humming along. Operations can certainly attest to the complexities of keeping our two plants in check and in compliance. But upsets do happen, and their primary reason is upstream of the treatment process at industrial and commercial locations. But upsets do happen, and their primary reason is upstream of the treatment process at industrial and commercial locations. Next, protecting wastewater's sludge quality, which is not something that gets a lot of coverage, but it's no less important. And healthy sludge equals effective process. As you can see from the image to the right, the microbes help us keep our waste. These microbes need good quality sludge to make this happen. Excess sludge also needs to be disposed of. Or the process has to stop. Sludge has to go somewhere. To get rid of this sludge, it has to be treated even further, according to regulations. Next, our next point, our objection, objectives is, of course, to maintain warrants with our provincial and federal laws. Great objective there. It can be a challenge. Without the right bylaw tools, there are several acts and regulations that we are mandated to follow with the wastewater. Primary resources are the Ontario Water Resources Act, the Environmental Protection Act, the Nutrient Management Act. And new to the bylaw is the Waste Water Systems Treatment Regulation, which. Federal government put in place a couple years back now. Moving on, final, finally with our bylaw objectives here. We would like to assist in optimizing the wastewater system efficiency. Is to reduce the potential of stormwater from entering sanitary sewer system. This is because our wastewater treatment plants can only handle so much volume at any given moment. This volume is defined as an operating condition in our potential approvals as well. So adding to this volume, the storm waters are major problems, especially during extreme weather. These flows can easily triple the volume coming into our wastewater plants. When this happens, the plant is less efficient, uses more resources, and can result in plant bypasses and negative performance. The plant itself is not the only asset needing protection. The pipes that convey the storm and sewage can suffer damage as well. Degradation and can be obstructed. For someone who does not know this, familiar with underground infrastructure, I threw out a slide here. Take off from the city of Toronto, I think, that explains how the public services connect to the private services. And their various functionalities. As you can imagine, we have thousands of meters of this infrastructure on the township. This infrastructure used to be maintained, but clear of destruction. The updated bylaw will assist the efforts, preventing it to be completed by staff. Now moving on to rationale, there have been. Since we've just covered our goals, let's give a few points here of rationale. Over the last twenty years, the EPA, the OWRA, and the NMA have. 频频 frequent amendments almost on a yearly basis, so. The regulatory environment has changed substantially. Amendments include adoption of CSA standards, changing the discharge objectives. And of course, the wastewater systems regulation, which is coming at federal level. And most, last but not least, is the new long series bylaw. As a, as a guidance for municipalities updating the bylaws. This, this effort brought a lot of information to the Canadian Council of Ministers of the Environment, AKA the CCM. To establish critical concentrations to be allowed to discharge water and to develop the framework for maintenance. Best man, best man of the practices, both conduct and more. All of this has prompted municipalities to update the sewer use bylaws. Aside from both, aside from regulations, it is worth noting that labating methods have become better over the years. Creating protection at much lower levels, affordable and achievable than labating. Test methods have been standardized and results are more reliable. My apologies if you can't hear me all that well, I just alerted to the fact that my audio might not be all that great. Keep in mind, councillors, this will be provided to you at your own, at your own pace as well. So another reason to complete the update was to bring consistency in application. Differences between the two bylaws, the lower and first bylaw, maybe hard to apply consistently across the township. And finally, one more for the rationale is the threat of global warming. As you know, it has become our present reality. With this reality comes an increasing need to see that we are taking care of our natural environment. This will only increase as our collective consciousness shifts more towards being better stewards of the environment. Why update sewer use bylaw once more? It provides environmental services staff with the better tools to do the job. And it enables the public to better protect our shared municipal assets as well as their private assets. The main change I see here. Is the requirement for pre-treatment devices within certain sectors of businesses and the requirements for maintaining them. These will provide the tools for our staff to achieve compliance with specific sectors and should have a positive impact. Also, there's a reference to ours. With, in terms of construction, sewer connection and alteration, references our township standards. Which provides for the direction and the level plan to enable destruction and demolition. Better rules defining discharge sampling, mammal sampling, and accessibility are included. Some lower discharge concentrations are included, which will limit the potential for high strength waste from the structure. Environment. The updated bylaw will also enable a regulatory environment that makes monitoring, enforcement, and ultimately compliance more achievable over time. Creates a more equitable distribution of responsibilities. But a public does not have to subsidize those that cannot adhere to the regulations. For those that cannot meet the regulations, application of this new bylaw will guide them toward an acceptable resolution. So why update the sewer use bylaw? We have, again. Our due diligence and detect our treatment plant's ability to treat wastewater and use our collective impact to the environment. The township continue to grow year over year, and this growth unfolds the reality of what our collection and systems receive will change. Case in point, sanitary wipes, masks, and disposal gloves. And you've seen an unreal increase in the amount of those over the last ten years. And that's something that probably wasn't seen or seen in the past. In this image right here, we have an example of a filamentous upset at the wastewater treatment plant in Fergus, in one of their aeration chambers. You can see the one chamber there has more of a chocolate milk appearance, right? Contrast to the cell beside it, which is darker and more normal looking. At this point, you have capacity cut in half almost at the wastewater plant. And once again, it just, it just means another day of very hard work to restore normalcy to the process for our staff. Some visuals that were provided to me from operations helped to tell a better story. We have spills to the environment. Byproduct of our society, it's going to happen, but with the right bylaw tools, we can limit the frequency. That spill, I believe, to one of our stormwater manifolds. Inlet bar screens clogging up with all manner of items. Sorry to gross you out there. This is the reality that staff have to contend with every day. Cost, time, and resources to move and have transported to the landfill. Again, a lot of people think toilets are trash cans. Next, we have fat birds. It's kind of just a name people have been using for fats oils and grease chunks and as they are sometimes gone. They clog up screen, pipes, got backups, and overflows in the clutching system. On top of that, they pose treatment plant operational challenges. And finally, our next image, we can see pump chambers completely clogged with items that just went down there. Wipes, rags, reinforced with calcite and hairs, some grease and other objects. Operators manually remove these items from the pumps to store operation and return the pumps to service as quickly possible. The existing bylaws and the updated approach. Ferguson Alora, as you know, passed their standalone bylaws in nineteen eighty eight and nineteen ninety respectively. Since the township eliminated in nineteen ninety nine, we've operated under two different bylaws with an approach to application. Essentially, we've been having one team playing off two different playbooks. So in two thousand and nine, the model series bylaw was published by the Canadian Council Ministers of the Environment. To assist municipalities with implementing bylaws to control contaminants discharged to the sewer system. This document was widely adopted by many communities and will play a big role in drafting this new bylaw of ours. Recognizing the need to modernize, modernize our current bylaw and to be more in tune with existing environmental policy. Research was undertaken and consultations were made with. Municipalities. A jurisdictional review was completed. Compared with other municipalities, their bylaws. Collingwood, one of, one of note that was consulted extensively. This new bylaw was produced by Infrastructure Services staff with an effort to keep many of the regulated concentrations. Similar to the original bylaws. But the resulting product is not that drastically shift existing allowable concentrations into the realm of unachieved. Due to recent information, regulatory changes, and the CC and the guidance document. Several parameters did need to be changed and are covered in the next two slides. Finally, SV Law completed a comprehensive legal review of the draft and completed minor edits. This legal document can finalize in twenty twenty. And these are the features of the updated bylaw that I thought would be good to go over really quickly. We have our modern updates to sanitary. Current changes, modern updates to storm, some of the forms and agreements. Additional requirements and our modern update for sampling analysis. Modern updates to sanitary sewers, a couple new parameters were included. These are what we test for at the lab when we take sample, one being chemical oxygen demand. Which is measured of the wastewater strength, much like BOD. It is very good to have listed under our bylaw as it is cheaper and quicker. For both township and discharge to be able to test. Get a good, good idea of where this wastewater lies. And is also a good indicator of biological oxygen. Which is the key parameter in our bylaw itself. Aside from COD, we have included fourteen organic compounds that were widely used in industry construction. It's certainly important to have these added to the list. We have fences and penalties, which are under Schedule Eight, applied to both the storm and sanitary sewer. These are provided as short form wording to be applied if needed. From my experience, just having these in the bylaw are a good deterrent, since they're likely, we're not likely going to see white expedition of films. The parameter changes right here. There are several forty eight total testing parameters, but highlighted on the screen are the ones that changes, change. You can see the existing column and the updated. With regards to regulated concentrations that are allowed in the sewer system. As can be seen, most have decreased, with only one exception, in oil and grease. Some of the more notable changes are biochemical oxygen demand. Which is a measure of wastewater strength. The higher the BOD, the harder to wastewater is to treat. The updated bylaw is calling for a modest increase here from three fifty to three hundred. TKN, which is a measure of nitrogen, that increased as well. As there is a new trend in environmental policy, increased nutrient loading on our environment. Cadmium and chromium are some heavy metals that have decreased. Oil and grease, probably the only one there to increase from one hundred to one fifty milligrams per liter. This was done, as you can see, as a bit unenforceable at the current one hundred milligrams per liter. Limit there, so it's more of a reality based, based number. Then you have side nine led, we all know their toxic effects on the health and environment. And then finally, phenols, they were systematically. Phenols are an organic compound taken in forms. Regardless of the form, it's, it's not welcome at the wastewater treatment plants, so it's good to see that this was decreased temporal. Modern updates to storm, just a few there. Downspouts, leaders prohibited. We have sediment interceptors and oil and grease interceptors for basically any, any area where you're going to get an oil and grease or sediment loading. Protect our natural water courses. Also, as stated in the previous slide, there are also now penalties available for improper connections to the storm sewer, so that's another modern update. Sediment interceptors, much as stainless oil and grease interceptors. It also protects our natural water courses from heavy sediment loading, which is not good for aquatic life. All in all, these represent some more tools that help eliminate inflow and infiltration and protect our environment. Moving on to forms and agreements, we have forms one and two. This is a big improvement, being the discharge or information reports, both the detailed and the generic. This will help us put some metrics on what is out there in the community and can also be used to assess the relative risk of location poses. Form three, the waste discharge department. It gives companies the permission to discharge certain types of waste on a temporary basis only, so it's not open ended. And usually comes with quite a few conditions. Then we have Schedule D, our codes of practice, registration form. This is for specific sectors and identifies mandatory procedures, equipment, training. As well as other provisions required as a condition of the wastewater discharge into the sewer system. Finally, there's Schedule G, another tool that will be used often, but. Certainly very useful, this agreement, it's a sewer discharge agreement for extra strength wastewater. Allows companies to discharge the high strength waste and to pay the extra fee if so. Additional requirements. Part seven, this is taken straight from the bylaw, we have food related, recent interceptors. This will probably have the biggest impact of sewer system of all the, all the contents we'd have here with the new bylaw. The fats oils and grease are persistent challenge, and it is clear that many food services are just not doing their part. The new bylaw has comprehensive set of rules centered around installation, operation, and maintenance, which will help considerably. These interceptors will also be required for automobile service stations, and will definitely make a difference there. When it comes to limiting oil, heavy metals, and byfalls. Sediment interceptors, as I mentioned above, are now required for specific sites that have high sediment loadings. Dental waste分离 separators are also required for the mercury from entering sewer system. Food waste grinders, not, not something you see typically around here, as you see too much traction. much traction in Canada, but, uh, nonetheless, they are not ideal and are prohibited under the, uh, bylaw. Uh, pre-treatment facilities, when required in certain situations, uh, uh, many of these have the same conditions, uh, with regards to proper operation. And then modern updates for sampling and analysis, uh, much improved here, uh, which will help, uh, our guys in the field there do their job better. Monitoring or sampling access points are required, which is, which is new to the bylaw. This is important so that our staff can accurately assess wastewater and, uh, assess flows well. As well as pre-treatment facilities are required, sampling points, uh, must also be included. Um, at this point, once again, it stresses accessibility for sampling, so that if a company does not install pre-treatment, they also need to have, um, staff to assess this pre-treatment. Uh, designated authorities for sewer use, uh, officers are more comprehensive as they are laid out in part thirteen of the new bylaw. Sewer officers are now able to get through a commercial or industrial location to sample and to discharge. As well, automated sampling devices can be used. Uh, many samples now are done using composite samplers, so that's, that's good to add. Um, and then, uh, self-monitoring by industrial, uh, merchant and people, customers if required. Um, certainly a good one to add as well. Self-monitoring is a good option to have for, uh, for monitoring various sites when township staff, uh, are just, uh, uh, not available. Uh, finally, our second last slide here, we have our, uh, our expected impact over time. Um, so what we are expecting to see over time or, or what, what is the impact we should experience from the bylaw being updated? Initially, time will, uh, staff, staff time will need to focus on, uh, the initial phase of inflammation, implementation, uh, some increases in field and administrative resources will be required initially and possibly beyond to educate, monitor, enforce and document. Uh, extra strength cost recovery, this being only for those ICI locations that exceed regulatory limits, uh, as there will be a means now to recover this cost of that treatment uh, at our public wastewater treatment plants, uh, putting the responsibility back on the ICI, the, uh, the industrial, commercial, institutional location to financially reimburse or to invest in pre-treatment. Uh, for operations and maintenance, uh, generally as, uh, we have more control over what comes into the system, we can become more efficient. For assets, uh, you expect to be able to manage them on a more predictable cycle by having greater control. Uh, we have a good compliance record with our regulator, the, uh, ECP, um, which highlights the dedicated, uh, dedication and skill on wastewater team addresses. Um, the updated bylaw will help to shore up areas of concern, uh, that have the potential to become non-compliancees. Uh, another, uh, improvement over time, uh, these component just, uh, sets we, uh, we spoke of, um, so it'll be, uh, it'll happen, but, uh, less frequently, which is, which is a huge improvement. Um, and then finally, uh, equipment and software needs, uh, go increase a little bit at low levels over time, um, uh, but it will make staff more efficient as they add new, uh, and better equipment can find ways to cover the administrative side through leveraging technology. And that, uh, that, that is it, uh, a quick ending note here, uh, that I think is important to keep in mind is, uh, that an updated bylaw will set up central to succeed. It is a good body of work and we'll see a positive impact for the township over time with a relatively small disruption to the ICI community. Uh, so that together we can do our best to ensure the township remains clean, healthy and beautiful for our children, our community and of course, uh, and that is it. Uh, thank you for your time, council and, uh, managers. Uh, if you have any questions, uh, feel free to shoot them my way of Dino's, uh, Dino's way. Thank you.
Thanks very much, uh, Mike, for that in-depth, uh, report, uh, Mandino. Um, I'll ask if there's, uh, any questions from members of council. Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have two questions for Dino or perhaps Michael. My first question is, uh, I noticed on one of the diagrams says a sewage meter on it. Uh, will this new by, uh, make, uh, sewage meters required for all residents? And more importantly, will there be any change in the billing rates for sewage rates as a result of this new bylaw?
Who's best to answer that, Dino?
Um, sure, and maybe Colin can jump in with regards to the rates, but, uh, thank you, Mayor Linton, and through you, uh, Counselor Foster, uh, I, I, the, the new bylaw would not require any sewage meters of any sort. Um, there would be no metering of sewage. The, uh, bylaw strictly deals with the quality of the discharge and not so much the quantity. Um, with regards to rates, uh, those have been established through our sewer, uh, through our rate, um, our rate study and through our, uh, fees and charges bylaw. Um, I, I can't recall what the, the increase was to this year. Um, I was thinking maybe Colin might have that on memory or not, but there, there was a slight increase to rates as of this year. I can follow up with you if you need, uh, a more precise number.
Does anybody on staff know that precise number off the top of their head? Otherwise, uh, staff can send it all council after the meeting. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor Linton. Um, so for twenty twenty-one, the, um, the water rates increased by point nine percent and wastewater went up by two point eight percent.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Foster, second question.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. Yeah, that's good. I, my main question there was whether there would be a change to rates as a result of this bylaw. I believe the answer, what I'm hearing is no, there's no change to rates as a result of this bylaw. My second question is, um, let us put our, our minds, uh, into the position of the citizen or the business operator, one who might, uh, either own a restaurant or be wanting to start one, or perhaps an automotive garage, either owning one now or wanting to start one, or, or even a dentist for that matter, with amalgam discharge. How, how will we communicate this bylaw to the business owner so they know whether they need a grease trap or not, and whether they need to install one? How will we encourage compliance and, and what, you know, what steps will we take so everyone has a chance to comply if they're not already?
Dino?
You know, if you have them. Yep, thank you, Mayor Linton, and, and through you. Um, the primary focus of this will, and initial phases would be through education and, and outreach. Um, that's really the only way we can. Uh, at, at this point, anything new development in terms of, um, building, uh, requirements would require those, uh, uh, grease traps and amalgam separators regardless. Um, they are a code of practice for dentists, so new dentists starting would, um, require it through their code of practice. Um, but anyway, in terms of, um, trying to provide communication and, and information and education, it would simply be through that level of outreach. We, we anticipate going through a targeted mailout. We have a list of ICI, uh, property owners, um, mailing out the, um, introduction, uh, you know, potentially with an open house. We had kind of added around the idea of an open house. It, um, certainly may be a challenge given our current climate, uh, but I think that we can find creative solutions to, uh, that, uh, challenge, given that we've seen them being implemented in other, uh, areas throughout the township. And, uh, then doing a bit of a rollout in terms of targeted information. Um, nothing door-to-door and, and no pressure. We're, we're just trying to get people moving towards the right path.
Thank, thanks, Dino. Uh, Counselor Van Loon?
No particular questions. I do, I do think it's important that, uh, especially because we're at the headwaters, that we protect the water source and, and the start is at the sewer side of things. Thanks.
Counselor McQuaid?
I just had, uh, one question, the, um, the re- the ban on downspouts, does that, that I think probably means that you're not allowed to, you know, attach your downspout directly to your sewage output? Is that, uh, what it is, or what does that mean exactly?
Yeah, uh, yes, you're correct. That's, that's basically what that means, and it's in our design standards now. Uh, and we don't want to, we don't attach downspouts to directly to storm system.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kiettris?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, I do have a question about, um, it was sort of partially answered or asked by, uh, Counselor Foster, but I'm wondering about the outlay of this, um, new sewage outlets. It's thirty years since we've had this, you know, update, and there's a lot, so many things that have happened. And I'm wondering, um, how's this going to be put out, like, to the public? Um, and I have another question after this, though.
Anything to add to your answer to Counselor Foster, Dino?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Linton, and again through you. Um, I think generally the public, the ICI sector would be a mailout, as mentioned, to Counselor Foster. Um, uh, if it's, uh, an, an, an announcement to the general public, i- if that's something council would like to see, we could certainly accommodate that through, uh, uh, social media campaign or through, um, our newspaper.
Second question, Counselor Kiettris? Just unmute yourself, Counselor Kiettris.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, from the graphics that I saw, I think an actual, uh, information, like, booklet to the taxpayers to see, like, what the problems are created from, from the sewage is, is like, I mean, it's, I could see some of those things like diapers and masks. I mean, it seems commonsensical, but, um, yeah, you know, you could solve so many problems by doing a blitz. And so, I mean, I don't know whether I need to make a motion, but I, I think that we should inform people, now we have, and we're working on this new sewer bylaw, that we blitz people that this is what we're looking for to, uh, to, to happen for sewage, and then all the things that they can do. And, you know, and maybe we should just sort of have a little star point if people fix up their, their actions or something like that. I mean, I just sort of think it's, it's a huge problem. I, you see from those graphics, um, fibers, like, it's incredible, it just bungs them all up. Um, so I just, I think you could solve a lot of maintenance problems, that's all.
Yeah, I think that's a great, good suggestion. The picture, uh, picture in this case is worth a thousand words, so that's good, good feedback to, uh, to staff for sure. Any, uh, additional comment on that, Dino?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Linton, and through you, uh, we, we, that, that is a great suggestion. Um, Kendra does, uh, a great job at our social media campaign to reduce rags to, and, and grease, of course, uh, to our sewer systems. Um, the start of the pandemic, we saw an absolutely astronomical amount of disinfectant wipes, um, clogging our pumps and, and affecting our pumping stations. Uh, we've seen a marked reduction since Kendra's campaign. Um, however, we can certainly put more information out there. Uh, we have opportunities through our billing as well, uh, which we've taken advantage of. Um, it, it's definitely a hard message to get out, and it's definitely a common practice that happens. I, I like your idea of a star system, maybe the golden toilet award or something like that might work.
Counselor Dunsborough?
No, I think we've had a good discussion around getting the word out, and that was my only issue, so, uh, no questions.
Counselor McCray?
Uh, thank you, Mary Lynn, uh, through you, I have, um, five questions. Uh, the first one's related to, um, section seven point two, vehicle and equipment service oil and grease interceptors. I'm just wondering, um, should we be including car washes where they may have undercar, um, scrubbing with the water where there might be oil and grease coming off the vehicle?
Dino?
Thank you, Mayor Linton, and through you, uh, that's a great suggestion. I will look deeper into the bylaw to see if they are captured. I, I honestly can't say whether they are right now.
All right, uh, Dino, may I jump in?
Absolutely, thank you, Mike.
Um, so they are covered under, uh, sediment interceptors, uh, for the, uh, for the car washes, because they're, they're a huge source, uh, if, if anyone needs an interceptor, it's a car wash. So that's a good point, but, yeah, they are covered.
Okay, no, uh, thank you. Um, my other question was, um, reading through the document, I must commend you on, it's very thorough and comprehensive. What about the construction industry when they're doing construction near a storm sewer? I do see them putting special sort of filtration, um, clause down into the storm drains, but I didn't recall reading anything in here that actually spoke to construction, um, companies needing to actually do that. Should that be in this document?
Yeah, Dino, Michael?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Linton, and through you, Mike, feel free to jump in. Uh, the, the bylaw does cover, uh, construction activities and discharge, uh, water from construction sites. Um, again, I'd have to, uh, I'd look further into the bylaw to spell out all the, um, actual locations and be happy to follow up with you on the specifics.
Mike?
Yeah, there is, um, there's a, a limit for a total solid, so it'd be pretty obvious at a construction site, they'd be in violation if, uh, there is any water, uh, going into a storm cut space and that, uh, and it was in any way, uh, not clear.
Okay. Um, section seven point five, um, uh, food waste grinders, are these garburators or are these something different?
Uh, they're garber, uh, garburators, like, uh, like you'd see in a kitchen sink.
So basically, um, people are no longer allowed to use these? If someone already has something in their house, does this mean that they can't continue or?
Um, through you, Mayor Linton, uh, and Counselor McCray, that these are already not allowed through our existing bylaws.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I won't tell you, we've got some. Um, okay, my other question, just reading through the document, um, are pool owners required to obtain permits before draining their, um, pool water? Often when you drive down streets, you'll see water flowing out from behind houses where someone's lowering the water in their pool. Does this require, uh, permit?
Thank you, uh, for the question and through you, Mayor Linton. Um, not, not specifically, it depends on the discharge quality. Uh, it has to meet certain chlorine, uh, free chlorine requirements. Other than that, no.
So I guess, um, related to what Counselor Kiettris was, um, suggesting in terms of getting information out there, perhaps something could be put out advising pool owners about the chlorine levels of their water before they discharge?
Again, a, a great suggestion. Uh, we came upon this last fall, uh, and I've done a little bit of research. There is some information packages that are out there for pool owners, uh, for environmentally friendly discharge practices of pool water and then closing, like, during the pool closing season. Um, something we're currently in development right now. We probably won't issue it until much later in the year, August or, or later, so it's fresh in people's minds as they do go through the close-down procedure. Um, but before that point, uh, what we'd like to do is get them to the companies that frequent the area. Um, there are some great examples out there. Many municipalities already have something similar. It's, uh, like a one-page flyer, and, um, it covers those items specifically.
Okay, thank you. Um, my final question is just related to, um, section fourteen. section 14.1. It was briefly mentioned where it's, you're suggesting that downspouts are not to be connected to storm sewers. But the way it reads, it sounds like one cannot actually attach downspouts to cisterns if somebody wanted to install a cistern. Or for example, with the Haylock Youngblood property, I understand there's a separate system to catch water coming off the roofs and it'll be fed into a separate storage area for release down into the aquifer. The way I read sort of 14.1, it sort of implied you couldn't do that. So I guess I just wanted some clarification.
Thank you for the question, Counselor McCray, and through you, Mayor Linton. I'm not, I would have to look more specifically to determine what the cistern reference is. Unless, Mike, do you have any information on that?
I'm not 100% on that. Dino, but I, I mean, if it's not attached to the sanitary system, that's, that's ultimately what we're trying to, let's say there is no downspouts to the sanitary sewer. If it's gonna go to the storm or infiltrate to recharge the groundwater system, that's kind of a different, a different thing. I, I, I believe that should be all right.
It's just, yeah, section 14.13. No person shall connect or permit their rainwater leader, blah, 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 to be connected either directly or indirectly to the sanitary sewer connection and shall instead convey the stormwater groundwater away from the building in such a way that the stormwater and groundwater will not accumulate at or near the building and will not adversely affect adjacent properties. So I'm just, the way I read that, it wasn't clear whether or not, okay, you could put in a cistern or what's going to happen to Haylock Youngblood. That's allowed.
Colin?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Linton. So, so yeah, so this, this would still allow that third pipe. So it's a groundwater collection system that's, that's, that's being designed and included in the Haylock subdivision. You have them in a couple of other subdivisions as well, Storybrooke, Summerfields. There's one in Alora Meadows. So these are systems that are just collecting groundwater, lowering the water table and discharging it to the, to the surface water. So those would continue to be permitted. Yeah, I don't think the bylaw expressly prohibits cisterns or rainwater harvesting. If, if a resident, you know, chooses to, to do that, you know, provided that they're, they're following building code requirements, you know, the bylaw would, would permit that.
Okay, it just, it just wasn't clear to me. So I just, I'd raise it. Thank you. Otherwise, great document.
Thanks, Counsel. Any final comments, questions from Counsel on this? Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one last point. Dino, I wondered, I'm intrigued by the idea of communicating more frequently. I know of many homes in Ward three that do, they're older homes and many do not have backflow preventers. And Mike, you mentioned that in your speech briefly. How, how could we, is there a way we could continue to encourage people to install backflow preventers? And is there a way we could consider incenting homeowners to do just that? You're, you're asking people to dig up their floor, install one of these things. And yet if they don't and they have a backflow, the consequences are pretty serious. Is there a way we could incent them, number one, to do it? And more importantly, remind them that it's something they ought to do on the communication strategy. Dino?
Yeah, Dino?
Thank you for your question, Counsel, Counselor Foster, and through you, Mayor Linton. We certainly can. There's, we have availability of, again, through social media, through our billing, buck slips or full page ads and through the paper, we could provide further information on backflow prevention devices that are installed in your sewer system. They do, they are both a positive and a negative. They, they do tend to get, need some maintenance. Not everybody wants to stick their hand into them to check the springs. However, there are some new ones that utilize different technology that are a little less maintenance intensive. In terms of incentives, I don't know, Colin, is that something that you wanted to speak to? Be a counsel's direction, I would suspect?
Oh, yeah, through, through Mayor Linton. Yeah, we, we don't have an incentive program. There was a third party that did, did approach us a number of months ago about, about partnering with them to offer, you know, a certain coverage. It's, it was more, I think, of an insurance program rather than actually installing the device itself. But, but typically, you know, unless there was an issue, I think we'd rather, you know, get to the source of the sewer backup itself, as opposed to try to do a Band-Aid solution with, with a, with a backflow prevention device. You know, that, that's, that's my preference. So currently, we don't have a whole lot of reoccurring areas where I think an incentive program, we'd want to, we want to focus an incentive program. Yeah, like I said, my, my preference would be to get to the root of the problem and, and eliminate the backups altogether and eliminate the risk if possible.
Hey, I have a recommendation here that I'll read. The Council of Township Center White authorized the mayor of municipal clerk to execute a new bylaw to regulate sewer use of the township wastewater systems and to repeal bylaw 2849 Sewer Use Ferguson, bylaw 3000-90 Sewer Use Alora. Can I have a mover for that recommendation, please? Counselor Kiettris, second, my Counselor Dunsmore, all in favor? And that carries. Thanks very much, Dino. Thanks very much, Mike and Colin for that. Moving on to 11.3, the Township Community Impact Grant approvals. And we have Dorothy, our manager of community development, festivals, culture and tourism. Welcome, Dorothy.
Thank you, Marilyn. Good afternoon. So our community advisory board met a few days ago, maybe a couple of weeks ago now, and to review the applications for our community impact grants. We received a total of 10 applications this year, which is less than what we normally get. But that's okay, because if you recall, we had some groups that were not able to use our funding last year and we had the ability to roll their funding over to 2021 for them. So the number of applications were down. So we received 10 totaling $38,000. Upon review of all the applications, the committee decided that there were two applications that did not meet the criteria of the, of the funding for this, of the policy. And so they made the decision that they were not eligible for funding. And then there were two groups that they, the committee decided to defer the decision to council to make a decision on, simply because they both, these groups have received OLG funding, which is against the rules of the policy. You can't be receiving more than one source of funding through the policy. So they have asked that a decision be made by council on those two applications. One was for the Alora Center for the Arts and the other one was for the Fergus Scottish Festival. And then as a result of the applications and less money being allocated, the committee would like to make a recommendation to council to allocate the funding to some neighborhood wellness initiatives and/or the Central Wellington Community Foundation for their COVID response fund. That's it, pretty much in a nutshell. There's a listing of the applications that received the, or recommendation that they would like to receive funding. The Community Resource Center for $3,000, the Alora Environment Center for $3580, the Grand Celtic Pipe Band for $5,000, Metz Pumpkin Fest, which is a brand new application for 500, the Children's Foundation for 5,000, and the Wellington Pregnancy Center for 1,000. And those are the recommendations by our committee. Any questions?
Thanks, Dorothy. I'm gonna go around the tale, but I'm gonna start with Counselor Dunsmore first because he was involved in these discussions. So I'll turn it to Counselor Dunsmore.
Okay, first question, Dorothy, can you give me the total amount that's left available that we were talking about again?
So including the two applications for the Alora Center for the Arts and the Fergus Scottish Festival, the total funding left over is approximately $31,000.
Okay, yeah. So I remember that discussion well. And so just to bring counsel up to date, the, the committee had a robust discussion. The, the issues around the, the two applicants, the Alora Center for the Arts and the, and the Fergus Scottish Festival, is it both received money already? Normally, we deal with these grants before we do, deal with the OLG funds. But this year, we dealt with the OLG funds and then the grants came through. And the criteria is quite clear. If you've received funds already, you're not eligible for these grants. And having received the OLG funds this year, it made them ineligible. So the committee has referred it back to council as to what we should do. That would mean that we would be changing the criteria in my book and that's, that's why they sent it back. Changing the criteria is a decision for council. And personally, I think we shouldn't change the criteria. The second part of the, the motion that came out or the request that came out of the township, Counselor Kiettris, you're, we had a robust discussion around a, a motion that you had put forward. We were trying to put things on, on neighborhood committees and try to get a vision for that. And here is unused money. And I thought, okay, let's, let's see if we could bring it back to council and see what we can do for it, rather than go hunting for a budget for the idea that you had. Now, I know we would eventually have to refer that back to staff to come up with a report and a spending plan. But here in a COVID crisis, this committee saw that there was funds left over and perhaps we could put it to good use. So those are my, my remarks, your worship.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it to Counselor Kiettris for a second because this does get to some of the comments that he was making in the resolution. So I wouldn't mind hearing from Counselor Kiettris next. Counselor Kiettris?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do appreciate consideration for my future notice being reviewed again. And I, I, I think that this is something that if we can, I'm, I'm planning to work with staff and hopefully we can get some things happening about hospitality and wellness in our community. So the consideration of these funds for that, I'd appreciate that. I mean, obviously, I still have to bring this forward to council to decide though.
Counselor McCray?
I agree with what I've heard so far. I think both the Laura Center for the Arts and the Fergus Scottish Festival have received funding through OLG. So I don't think we should be considering giving them any more funding from this particular impact grant section. I like the idea of taking the money and setting it aside for these neighborhood, whatever you call them, responsiveness, whatever. I'd like to see the money go towards that. I think that once we get out of COVID, it'd be great if we can do something for the community and have small neighborhood events to bring everyone together. I think that's the way we need to focus is let's get out of this and let's come together again as a community.
So just to be clear, Counselor McCray, would you suggest, I want to make sure we're tracking this, as we're going along. Would you suggest then that the $10,000 would be from, that would shift from Alora Center for the Arts, Fergus Scottish Festival and put that back into the balance of funds remaining to handle? Okay, I just wanted to be clear that we were talking about the same thing. Counselor McQueen?
I, I'm, to be honest, I'm mixed a little bit. I, I, but I think I agree with what both Counselor Dunsmore and Counselor McCray have suggested so far, which is following our existing rules as far as not allowing recipients to be funded from two different sources. And setting the excess aside, I, the reason I'm a little mixed is because I, I really would like to see more definition of what that means. But I guess that's, as long as it's set aside, we, we have the opportunity, it's going to come back to council eventually and we'll have the, just have that time to, to decide if that's the best way to spend this money or not. So yes, I would go ahead with what's been suggested.
Counselor Van Luen?
Thanks, yeah. I'm very appreciative of the work that the committee's done and especially in regards to taking into consideration Counselor Kiettris's thoughts and putting this stuff into this, these funds into a reserve is a great idea until we can figure out how to deal with them and which best place to use them as we, as we digest what's going on. Thanks.
Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Just going from memory, I believe the Scottish Festival had asked for, I believe it was 55,000 from the OLG funding envelope. And I think we awarded them something like 28 or perhaps it was 30,000. So it was only about 60 cents on the dollar of what they were. I think we need to remind ourselves just how important the Scottish Festival is to our community. We need to remember that their proposal was one where they would be using volunteer labor, electricians and such, in order to update the electrical infrastructure in the sportsplex field. Yes, it has a direct benefit to the Scottish Festival. But it's my view that we should make an exception this year to the policy that we only allow them one source funding, one or the other. First of all, because they could do so much more if we were to award them some of the extra money. They're going to upgrade the field infrastructure for the festivals, also for the fall fair and also can be used for any field sports. And I think that's a really great way to invest in our community festival, invest in our sports groups, invest in our fall fair and actually get that infrastructure in the field updated, I'll say with 50 cent dollars because the, many of the contractors are volunteering their time. So I, I would like to see us make an exception and award the 5,000 to the Scottish Festival, even though there are two sources of funding.
Sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a couple of things and then I'll pass it on to others that want to speak. But I do completely like the direction that the counselors are going in. I think it's absolutely critical. We stick to our criteria. That's why we have them. And I, you know, I think this is something that we could all get behind, looking at potential neighborhood work to be done. So I'm going to, I'm, I, I think that we could reword this and I'm gonna, I'm gonna put something out there, see if we get a mover and a seconder and see if it does the trick. So I'm gonna read it, that the recommendation of the Council of Township Center Wellington approved the grant allocations as followed: Community Resource Center for $3,000, Alora Environment Center for $3580, Grand Celtic Pipe Band for $5,000, Metz Pumpkin Fest for 500, Children's Foundation for 5,000, Wellington Pregnancy Center for 1,000. And that council, and that council can, consider the funding request from the Alora Center for the Arts ineligible in the amount of 5,000 ineligible. Okay, okay, sorry. Let me rephrase that one paragraph. And that the council consider the funding request from the Alora Center for the Arts in the amount of 5,000 and the Fergus Scottish Festival in the amount of 5,000 ineligible in accordance with section 1.3 of the grant application policy. And that the balance of the funds remaining be dispersed between any future neighborhood wellness initiatives and/or the Center White and Community Foundation COVID-19 Community Response Fund. Counselor Dunsmore?
I will move that.
Can we get a seconder for that as written? Counselor McCray? Can we get a seconder for that as written? Councillor McCray? All in favor? Opposed?
Sorry, um Kelly, I didn't, I I just wanted to make a comment on your motion before we vote on it.
Okay, sorry about that, cancel the vote, it didn't happen.
Yeah, um the wording that says and that the balance of funds remaining be dispersed between any future neighborhood well I I think that that leaves a little bit too general. I think it it should be defined a little bit better as as approved by council or something of that nature instead of just saying any. That's my opinion.
Yeah, that's maybe not, that's that's probably a good uh good caveat to put in there as approved by council, it just doesn't leave it wide open. Um is is the mover in the seconder of this motion okay with that friendly amendment?
I'm okay with it.
Oh, yes?
I'm okay with it.
You're okay with it? Okay, so the 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 wording has changed, I'm just gonna read that final paragraph to make sure we know what we're talking about. And that the balance of the funds remaining be dispersed between future neighborhood wellness initiative as as approved by council and or the Centre White and Community Foundation Covid nineteen Community Response Fund. Is that okay?
That's good.
Okay, now we'll go back to the vote, all in favor? Opposed? And that carries. Thanks very much, good work, that's exciting. And thanks to the committee, make sure that you extend thanks of council to the committee, this is not easy to do this kind of stuff and you know, it's it's very important that they stick to the criteria and I know I can imagine the kinds of conversations that you had and so just really uh thank them on behalf of council, please councillor Dunstmore. Eleven point four McDonald funding projects update for council, uh and I'll turn it over to Pat Newsom, Managing Director of Community Services. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you. Um, so this is an update for council. In two thousand and eighteen, council directed the Community Services Advisory Committee to review the applications for the Jack R McDonald Fund. And council allocated one point five zero nine million to community projects. After C S A spent a great deal of time uh reviewing all those projects, eight projects were recommended for funding. Council supported uh these recommendations and directed staff to prepare an agreement with each recipient for funding to outline the specific details of how the funds would be used, administered, spent on what um the appropriateness for the projects. So um staff have worked with each of the recipients over the past two years to establish each agreement and help each project come to fruition. The objective of today's report is to bring council up to date on the status of each project and receive direction on how to proceed. Staff are recommending that the council direct C S A, who was initially involved in the grant review process. And they are linked to the community to review the projects that are not yet completed and make recommendations if needed on how to proceed. Each project is unique and the status of each project is unique. Uh, the recommendation included in the report outlined some of the specific objectives that C S A would provide as recommendations uh for council for their consideration. Uh, so if you uh review the recommendation that's in the report. There's uh the five bullets there on some specific information that C S A could bring back to council on how to deal with each of these uh grants that don't have agreements with them yet. And attached to this report is a summary of the eight projects that did receive funding and the status of each one. So I won't get into each detail, however, I'm of course able to answer any questions and happy to do so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Pat. Questions, comments from council? Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, no questions. Thank you, Pat.
Councillor Van Loon.
No, no questions, just uh appreciate the work they do on these uh, they're they're difficult decisions.
Councillor McQueen?
I have no questions, I think um Pat's uh recommendation makes sense.
Councillor Ketchers?
Uh, no questions.
Councillor Dunstmore?
At no questions, I I have the utmost faith in the committee, yeah, having worked with them that they'll they'll do a good job at refining these and bringing them back to council for decision.
Councillor McCray?
Uh, yes, a couple of comments. Um, first of all, I certainly support that this goes back to C S A for further reflection. I'd just like to put out there, um related to KIP and the issue of water and wastewater. I'm wondering if maybe C S A and I would suggest you talk to the people um looking after the KIP project. Whether or not it's possible to still continue with at least running a water line down. If they were to be able to come up with some sort of a temporary um wastewater collection thing like maybe a trailer that the water goes into at the end. Because I think it would be beneficial to them to be able to have some water for cleaning um their dishes, whatever down there. So just something to consider. Um, in terms of ECFTA and Riverfest and wanting to consider an outdoor ban shell. My concern with that is um noise. I mean, I've certainly received um complaints over the years about um the noise from Riverfest. And what they're originally intending was a closed building where they could have musical performances where the likelihood of noise bothering the neighboring residents probably wouldn't be an issue. With an outdoor ban shell, that changes things. So I'd certainly like the C S A to look more closely at that.
Thanks councillor McCray, and I think um it's good councillor Dunstmore and and staff will bring that to the C S A committee to make sure that those are included in the discussions. I'm gonna read the recommendation that the council, the township of Centre Wellington, direct the Community Services Advisory Committee to review and make recommendations to council on the McDonald Trust Fund projects with respect to the following. Timing for each project with reasonable expectations for completion dates. The request by Laura Center for the Arts and Riverfest to alter the scope intent of the project approved for funding, direction for an agreement for the KIP funding project. Direction on any funding that was awarded but not remitted as a result of the project not being able to fulfill the project work. Uh, any other recommendations on projects still not completed? Have a mover for that recommendation, please. Councillor McCray, second by councillor McQueen, all in favor? And that's carried. Moving on to eleven point five, Safe Restart Agreement, additional funding. I will turn things over to uh Dan Wilson, Managing Director of Corporate Services and Treasure. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor Lynton. Um, so this report is in regards to the federal provincial uh Safe Restart Agreement that provides emergency assistance to Ontario municipalities uh with respect to Covid nineteen. Um, council will recall that through phase one of this program, we received approximately seven hundred and eighty six thousand. And uh staff were directed to put that those funds into a newly developed Covid nineteen reserve. Uh, we also put the twenty nineteen surplus into that reserve. Uh, we have been given uh further notice from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs um that we are receiving an additional hundred and fifty seven thousand through this Safe Restart uh program. Um, staff are recommending that we put those additional funds into the Covid nineteen reserve um so that we can use those um for for the impacts of Covid nineteen in twenty twenty and beyond. Um, so we're really looking for direction at this point from council to to put those funds into the reserve. Uh, we did have a discussion at the uh twenty twenty one budget deliberations around anticipated impacts of Covid nineteen on the twenty twenty one budget and that was approximately seven hundred and ninety thousand. And uh we are anticipating to have an impact fairly soon on twenty twenty. Uh, we're just starting the preparations for the twenty twenty audit and will be uh presenting to council in the near future on the impacts of Covid nineteen on twenty twenty and and that would result in a recommendation not to council to use some of these funds as well. So for now, we're just simply asking to put the money into the reserve and we'll report to council in in the future on the future uses of those reserves.
As a summarize, uh you're putting this money in a piggy bank and we'll talk about how to take it out of the piggy bank later on.
That's right.
Yeah, that was fast, eh? You could have just said that, I'm sure we wouldn't have had any questions then, Dan. Councillor McCray?
I like the idea.
Councillor Dunstmore?
Yep, let's put it aside, do we figure out what this has done to us and then spend it appropriately?
Councillor Ketches?
No questions.
Councillor McQueen? Councillor Van Loon?
No, it's good, good plan, thanks, Dan.
Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, no questions, I I'd be willing to move the motion.
Okay, I will read it and then I'll let you uh move it. Uh, recommendation of the council, the township of Centre Wellington, direct staff to allocate one hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars in additional funding received as part of the federal provincial Safe Restart Agreement to the township's Covid nineteen reserve to be used to fund operating pressures due to Covid nineteen. Moved by councillor Foster, seconded by the councillor Dunstmore, all in favor? And that is carried. Thanks, Dan. Moving on to C I P level two incentive uh for one sixty five, one sixty nine Getty Street, now Laura. This doesn't happen to have anything to do with the new grocery store in Laura, does it, Pat?
Absolutely does. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and council. Um, I'm very, very happy to bring forward this application for a level two C I P incentive for the new Getty Street Market. Uh, since twenty eighteen, when the previous uh store closed, the community and staff have been working on ways to bring a grocery store back to Alora. The Economic Development Task Force had made it a priority site so that we would be prepared if um we would get such an opportunity. Um, and luckily that opportunity has come forward. Uh, in July, the um C I O and I met with the new operator and we've been working with her since uh that time to help with make her dream of a revitalized grocery store in downtown Alora a reality. Uh, the C I P will assist in refurbishing the exterior of the building with new windows, new doors, new signage, uh stone repair and uh cleaning painting and cleaning and repair of the canopy that exists. The app application fits the criteria for a level two incentive for facade improvement and has an added economic benefit to the community. Um, so we're seeking approval for this level two incentive for the new market.
Thanks very much, Pat. Uh, exciting news coming to Laura. Um, members of council, councillor Foster?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to speak in favor of the recommendation. Uh, I actually attended school with the applicant. Uh, she's not a personal friend of mine, but um in my previous career, I I worked in the wholesale grocery sector. And it's it's a very, very difficult thing to be an independent grocer in Ontario and two thousand and twenty one competing with very, very large big box retailers. So this assistance will help um make a nice facade on the store and I I fully support it. Uh, the applicant's a very good operator and uh very successful in her previous store in Drayton and I think she'll be very, very successful in Alora. And most importantly of all, it's it's good for our community to have a grocery store open again in downtown Alora. So I'm very much in favor of this.
Councillor Van Loon?
Thanks, um I'm in favor of this and it's good to see our C I P funding being used, especially when you see the downtown streets and everything get uh improved, this is what the purpose for it was. So good work and I'm excited to see it happen.
Councillor McQueen?
I'm fully supportive of this.
Councillor Ketchers?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I totally think this is a great idea and I fully support this.
Councillor Dunstmore?
Yep, uh it major support for this, I want to thank the applicant for the hard work that she's put in and bringing this up to date. And uh congratulations to people in Alora, you're getting a grocery store.
Councillor McCray?
It's a great way to say thank you to the owner for reinvesting in Alora. I have one little last though is whether or not when she's redoing the facade, if she could remove some of the stonework in front of the um original facade of one sixty five, one sixty three Getty Street and show the old windows that used to be there. Uh, there's been several people in the community asking if that was possible, so I just put that out there.
I think uh it's a suggestion that our staff can bring uh to the applicant for sure. Um, I wanted to thank uh Pat um for all her work on this and and also our C I O. Um, we've been working with Deb uh for a long time on this and they they've come to the table and and helped her every step of the way. So and I will also wanted to thank the Economic Development Task Force for having the foresight to recommend um this to be a priority uh priority site so that these incentives kick in and and thank council for having the foresight to put a C I P in place. Um, that is is working and you see a lot of revitalization in their downtown core. So this is a perfect example of something that um is going to make um our community even better place to live. So thanks for everybody who put the work into this. Have a mover for this recommendation? Oh, I I should read it, actually. Um, recommendation of the council, the township of Centre White, can approve level two facade building property improvement grant loan for the priority site listed as one sixty five to one sixty nine Getty Street, Alora, the amount of ten thousand dollar grant and a ten thousand dollar loan and the council delegate the signing authority for level two facade building and property improvement grant loan, financial arrangement to the managing director of corporate services. Move for that recommendation, please. Councillor McCray, second by councillor McQueen, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much, council, that's that's uh exciting news. Onto section twelve, we have um five different information items. Um, and I'll just go around the room if anybody has any questions for any of those five. Um, we have the annual bylaw enforcement report, minutes from the Economic Development Task Force, minutes from the Community Services Advisory Committee, minutes from the Healthy Growth Advisory Committee and then committee of the whole tracking list. So go around the room, I'll start with councillor Foster, any questions or comments on any of those information items?
My only question, I think, is for uh Satnam, um um Satnam, when, you know, I'm I'm hopeful that we'll start to see uh increased enforcement and and it's not that I want you to be out ticketing everyone left, right and center, but it concerns me that we're not seeing more revenue from enforcement. Um, we know there are many issues with enforcement and I'm hopeful to see uh uh compliance encouraged by an increased levying of fines. Will will we expect to see that going forward?
Alright, so the uh, well, we're working on a couple of new bylaws, uh we're we're still updating a few others uh that weren't necessarily as effective in terms of enforcement. Um, having said that, I mean, our our overall objective is compliance based, um as it was when we established our bylaw philosophy through council. And so especially this year where or this past year where we had you know, residents with huge impacts from Covid nineteen, we we really tried to stress um the education element of it and we did receive uh overwhelmingly um compliance um through the issuance of orders or through just education. Um, so if there's an opportunity or a requirement to lay a charge, we definitely will. I mean, we obviously can't um create charges if there aren't any.
And just a reminder to council, um when we moved ahead with um this, these bylaw and bylaw enforcement, it was pretty clear uh the direction that we received from council to make sure that uh we use education um and that communication uh more so uh until we actually needed to use enforcement. So um we did provide that kind of direction to make sure that uh as our community wasn't used to this level of bylaw enforcement um that we made sure that we did the education and the communication first. Councillor Van Loon?
No, no questions on the reports and thankful to get them to see what's uh happening in each committee though, so thanks.
Councillor McQueen?
No questions.
Councillor Ketchers?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm uh I'm very glad that you had mentioned that because in the report, it says that in the future, they'll be actually writing down the engagement policy and I'm hoping that um that it will be a continuation um and not just a a word uh uh sort of handshake agreement that when the council that we actually, when we write that policy, that it's not um, it's very educational and not punitive. Um, I also just have another question. Um, it's about uh the committee of the whole tracking. It says the, it has the tra staffing strategy, but it doesn't have a date and I just kind of want to know. It's about the committee of the whole tracking. It says the it has the staffing strategy, but it doesn't have a date. And I just kind of want to know if what what's the date on that?
Andy, do we have any sense of what the date on that will be?
We don't at this point. At this stage, there is no urgency in the fact that we've approved the twenty twenty-one budget. So with COVID and the reopening and trying to work with the mass vaccination center, we will be bringing that back in the next few months. But it's not something that we have other priorities that we're trying to deal with that are pressing right now.
Counselor Dunsborough?
Yeah, I have a first a statement and then I have a question for Colin. So Satnam, I've had the opportunity of being involved in your mediation process between several residents in my ward in the last year, and I want to commend you for dealing with those situations without having to issue tickets or fines and all parties on all sides are quite happy when I followed up with them. So I want to thank you for your mediation skills. It's a job well done. Colin, on the committee of a whole tracking list, the phone calls have have lessened for me because we are in a lockdown situation. So a lot of the rural road speed limit stuff that I get questions on all the time has eased up. But I'm wondering, do we have a timeframe for this report on the on the speed limits in rural roads? Because I have a lot of residents in my ward that are concerned about speeding through through small areas where there's a fair number of houses and particularly side road four in Guelph, Guelph Street that are getting joyriders going up and down their excess of of what the limit is and and they're looking for, you know, what kind of things we can do.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks. Thanks for the question through through Mary Lynton. So yeah, so that's really the first step in in changing any speed limits is consolidating our speed limit bylaws. I don't think it's it's kind of one of those similar to the to the serious bylaws that likely predate amalgamation. So so it's definitely due to be to be updated. We have started the process. We've of the review and at this stage, you know, we're looking at bringing something in back to council in the summer is is our target right now. So but it's 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 a large task. We're trying to get through as much as we can before the construction season season is upon us. So but but yeah, we have started the process on that to consolidate a bylaw.
Counselor McCray?
No, thank you, Mary Lynton. I'd just like to echo Counselor Dunsborough's comments that really appreciate all the work that you, Satnam, and your team do to deal with the bylaw issues and the approach that you take. So thank you. And I'm just curious, is there a timeframe for when we can expect the noise bylaw, the public tree bylaw, the parking enforcement bylaw and the websites to come before council?
Yes, through you, Mary Lynton. So with the noise bylaw, I am going to be working with the issue we have with noise bylaw is that it's we're trying to propose a countywide bylaw. And so that that requires other municipalities in the county to be on board. And so this year I am trying to get a bylaw passed or or supported throughout the various enforcement agencies for the municipalities and then present it to all council. So it's a bit of a challenge, but I'm hoping that we can get something passed sooner rather than later. I don't have a definite timeline on it, but it's definitely a priority on my list. With respect to parking, it's another thing that we're we're working on. I believe we're going to be working with a pilot project for the first year for the downtown course and then assessing from there best, you know, best process forward. And then with the public tree bylaw, I believe that's still in drafting, if I'm not mistaken. And so we still need to iron up enforcement process for that. And that's going to require requirements or work from my end as well as from other departments to figure out best best platform. But we are working on them and they are coming to completion.
Other questions with the information items? Counselor Kiettrus?
Thank you, Mayor. I I'd like to I'm a little concerned about the noise bylaw having to wait for the whole county. Our situation in Center Wellington is that there's we have more people, we have, you know, it's a giant tourist center, we have different types of venues. And I I think that we need to sort of maybe consider just having our own policy for the noise and not asking, because I feel like that might delay things like for a much longer time. And there are people concerned about that. And I just want to have my say. I just think that that maybe we should have our own policy and then other people can adopt parts of it or not in the rest of the county.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna let Andy speak to that. There is a reason why we have tried to go to a consolidated. It has to do with enforcement. So I'm gonna pass it over to Andy.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. The major issue with regards to the noise bylaw, as I've spoken to a number of councillors through various names complaints, is our enforcement agency right now is the OPP for the noise bylaw. If we are to separate out of that, then we would be responsible for doing the enforcement, which would look at additional costs for our own bylaw enforcement of that. So there is a cost benefit analysis that is part of that overall bylaw.
Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the record, I want to be clear about my previous comment, and that is I I don't necessarily want rampant ticketing here, there, and everywhere. I do have, I'm aware of at least two situations where encouraging compliance is not working. The problems are remaining. And in that context, this is why I made my remarks that I'm not seeing enforcement occur. Secondly, I do wish to point out that when council was undertaking to hire a bylaw enforcement officer, council was told that a large part of the cost of hiring a bylaw enforcement officer would be offset by revenue from tickets effectively. And yet, in the, you know, here we are in year three or perhaps even year four of having a bylaw officer and recalling from the budget a hundred thousand dollars worth of costs and barely a thousand dollars worth of revenue. So we're nowhere near achieving any kind of cost recovery. And I think we all know that we have infractions occurring. And this is the the context by which I made those remarks. I really do think we need to see increased enforcement. It's the only way to get compliance. And so I do want to set the record straight on my earlier comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, just just to remind you, these are, I don't want to get into a major discussion on these. These are information items, but I don't recall that discussion in council at all. So I'm gonna pass it over to Andy for one last comment.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Yeah, in actual fact, staff presentations regarding the bylaw office enforcement very much spoke to the fact that there would be very little revenue stream coming from bylaw enforcement and that it was our intent for mediation. So that is inaccurate. As far as council's involvement with regards to any bylaw enforcement, this is strict, bylaws are approved by council and that is where council's involvement is stopped. It is strictly up to Satnam and the staff to decide when enforcement is to be handled or not. And it is very clear from direction from council. And I'll go back for many, many years, even prior to us having enforcement officers in Satnam, that it was very much education and mediation and trying to work through the strategy. So I do not agree with the statement made. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, council. And that's all for the information. I would just like to ask if there's an adjournment? A motion to adjourn?
Your worship, Pat Newsom had her hand up. I think she was trying to interject in a conversation there.
Pat?
I will be real quick. I just wanted to add to Satnam's answer to Ian, sorry, Counselor McCray's question about the public tree bylaw. We will be bringing a report back in March to council here. It is not the bylaw, but we need some feedback and direction from council before we proceed to complete the draft. So I just want to let you know that we're planning to bring that. Thank you.
Okay, motion to adjourn? Counselor Kiettrus, seconded by Counselor Dunsborough, all in favor? And we're adjourned. Thanks for very active council meeting. Have a great rest tonight.